Good evening. I'd like to call to order the July 14th meeting of the Upper Darby Township Planning Commission. It is approximately 7:01. Tonight for the roll call, we were sort of just chatting that we realized we don't really have name tags or name plates. We should probably do that. So given that there's a number of people here this evening, we thought we would take the roll call time to just introduce ourselves so you all know who you might be talking to as you take the podium for comments later. So Lee?
Okay. Lee Jordan, I've been on the committee, I guess it's going to be close to a year. I've been a resident of Upper Darby Township for 61 years, approaching 62 very, very soon.
And my name is Debbie Nai Fang. Can't make that same longevity claim as Lee, but I've been involved with the Planning Commission since the previous administration got the idea to get a formal Planning Commission put together. We operated as a committee for a little while, and then we formally formed it into a state sanctioned committee following the laws that the state allows for that. I had been leading it, and now we have a new chair, but he's not here this evening, so I'll chair for it. And my name is Debbie Nai Fang. I also work for the township in the finance department.
And I'm Michael Matika. I've been on the Planning Commission for about half a year now, and I work full-time as an architect, so most of my comments will be from that purview.
Okay, so there are three of us here this evening. Two are absent. That gives us enough people for a quorum, though. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any changes required of the minutes?
No changes.
Yeah, there is one change. Under the roll call, Josh, I was the one who called the meeting to order.
You got it. I'll make that change and get that all set.
So noted. Motion to approve as changed?
Approved.
All in favor? Okay, next order of business. Communications and bills. We don't have any communications or bills to take care of this evening, so we'll move on to our Community and Economic Development Report. I see Rita LaRue, our Director of Community and Economic Development, is here to give us an update.
Thank you very much. As always, it's a pleasure to be here. As the chair said, I am Rita LaRue, Director of Community and Economic Development for Upper Darby Township. When I was last before you, my update included our programs from Housing and Urban Development. We were just going into as a township, the formation of our action plan, which is required by the federal government to receive our allocation. Our allocation this year is just over $2.3 million, and a very large part of that allocation goes toward housing and quality of life issues. Housing is a major driver for community and economic development. By improving our residents' quality of life, by having better quality of housing, our community is strengthened, it's stabilized, and this positions us for long-term growth, both for our residents and the families, and for our shopping districts. Housing isn't one size fits all. We need to better address that. The housing stock in Upper Darby is pretty aged, most of it, so we are working with our community to do some rehabilitation of the housing, and we have been funded by HUD for that. Overall, improved housing is going to improve the quality of life for everybody in Upper Darby, both our residents and our visitors. So of that $2.3 million, we have almost $1 million this year for housing rehabilitation programs. In previous years, we've had about a half a million dollars a year. The program, unfortunately, got stalled with the pandemic, and it was hard to get it going again because of supply chain issues and finding people to do the work. So we have the million dollars this year. We received an additional $500,000 for home rehabilitation, which is a special program that in addition to rehabilitating qualified homeowners' homes, making them safe and habitable, taking care of lead remediation, anything that might be out of code, we also have the potential to be able to invest funds and bring in private-public partnerships. We are not going to do that this year. We have allocated pending a vote by council on July 16th. Our recommendation is to put that entire nearly $1 million toward eligible homeowners getting their homes rehabilitated. All of the HUD programs that we have here at the township, the administrative time, the staff time, the supplies, et cetera, is funded by HUD. The general fund does not take care of the administration associated with these programs. We also have about a half a million dollars. This is from previous year's program funds that went unused for first-time home buyers. The Upper Darby First-Time Home Buyer Program offers a maximum of $10,000 currently to eligible first-time home buyers. The maximum home price is $250,000. The applicants cannot have owned a home within the last three years. We are relooking at these guidelines. We think they might be a little bit low. A great thing about the program, as with any program, particularly federal programs, there is a lot of paperwork. So we have put aside funds so that applicants who are income-qualified can meet with counselors, professional counselors, who can help them get through that paperwork and plan for their future. Also important to the HUD program is addressing homelessness issues and the prevention of homelessness. So we have $150,000 approximately that will be allocated to be determined to an organization or organizations that are addressing those issues, and that can be street outreach, emergency shelter, homelessness prevention, rapid rehousing, homeless management information systems, and administration. We have also, as a township, recommended to council that the approximately $250,000 that we are allocated for public services projects all go toward preventing homelessness or addressing homelessness. So that's anywhere from the housing insecurity, the food insecurity, to those counseling services that I mentioned. So again, July 16th, this Wednesday, at the Township Council Meeting, will be the second public hearing during the meeting for our CDBG, ESG, and home action plan, and we welcome all members of the public to come and comment on the plan before council votes on it. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. So what you just outlined for us, that isn't, that will get approved or be presented to council on the 16th?
Yes.
So none of these programs are in existence yet?
The programs exist. This year's allocations are new.
And then how is this communicated to the, to the public, to Upper Darby residents? The rehabilitation, home improvement, first-time buyers, is that on our website?
It's, yes, it's all on the website. We will be working through Fair Housing Practices to do more to get the word out.
Thanks, Rita.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda would be reviews, but there aren't any Saldo reviews before us this evening, or any old business to pick up, so we can move right into new business, and we have a presentation tonight.
Thank you. Josh, could you put just the map of the current property?
If you please introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Greg Lingo. I'm the owner of Rockwell Development Group. We are a Delaware County-based land development company. From Upper Darby originally, I went, I spent 13 years in the, in the school system here. A graduate of Upper Darby High School as well. We're not looking tonight for a vote on anything, or a recommendation for future or anything like that. We're really just looking, going to be looking for feedback. The, yes. Sorry, can you hear me all right? All right. Yeah, we're not going to be looking for any, any kind of recommendation or any kind of vote. It's more just for feedback, generally speaking. I thought I would tell you a little bit about, more about myself first. So after graduating from Upper Darby, went to college and then came back, have lived in Delaware County, raised our family in Delaware County. We, I've set up with my wife a mentorship and SAT prep program at Upper Darby High School. We've donated over $150,000 to Upper Darby High School over the last 25 years. We set up a couple of scholarships for kids, for college, kids to go to college, as well as kids specifically from 1908 to 19026 or 19018, zip codes. Currently, my wife and I own just under 40 properties in the township. We've really changed the face of Fern Boulevard, if you're familiar with that. It started with purchasing the Waverly, the Wave, and then turning that into Station Tap, and then the old Citizens Bank, turning that into Artillery Brewing. So we've, feel like we've brought a lot of jobs to the township and also good quality redevelopment, and we're continuing to look at things in that vein. So the property that we're talking about is across the street from Drexel Line. It's about 14 and a half acres. It's currently zoned residential R2, I believe. So that would be small lot, single-family detached homes. Do you have, could you show that plan with the single homes? And again, these are just concept plans at this point. All right, so this is what the property currently, as currently zoned, could, could handle from a development standpoint with single-family detached homes. Along the top portion of the property is, there's a pipeline easement, and then there's also a creek that comes along the left side of the property. Generally speaking, when we looked at this plan, we felt like it was kind of repetitive of, you know, this really just kind of didn't, didn't wow us in terms of what we thought that this property could be. Upper Darby Township currently does not have a mixed-use zoning, so what we would propose would be introducing a mixed-use zoning to this area. Now, I say this, but this would require, we would meet with neighbors and get feedback on what the plans would look like ultimately, and we're really just here at the beginning stages. We've had the property under agreement for the last seven or eight months now, and we're just kind of figuring out what would be the best use for it. We do a lot of mixed-use developments in other municipalities, specifically Westchester, Wayne, Phoenixville, Ardmore, and we feel like we could, by clustering some of the development, provide some additional open space and areas that the rest of the residents would use, not just the homeowners. If you could show the mixed-use version? So in this, in this plan, we would have directly across the street from the shopping center, we'd kind of be mirroring that with some retail, commercial retail, or the kind of rectangular boxes there. We would have parking on our property. There would be a township park, kind of, I don't have the, I'll point it out here. This would be a pocket park here for any residents to use, as well as a little passive nature trail along the riparian area there, so folks could park here, walk on the trail, go to the park. We don't necessarily need to connect here. We were showing this connection on both plans, but we would have a right-in, right-out on that side, and then opposite of this traffic light here, have another egress and ingress to the property. So really, at this point, like I mentioned, we're just kind of looking for feedback. There's a lot more that would still have to happen to flush this out further, but if this was a non-starter, we wanted to know on the sooner-than-later side, in which case that we could figure out what we want to do.
Thanks, Greg. With the commission members, if you have questions or comments, and then following that, I'll ask any members of the public who would like to make a comment about the, the presentation to come forward at that time. Lee? Mike?
I got a lot, so if you want to go first, yeah.
Okay, I don't have, I don't have, I don't have a laundry list, so I'll go then. Of the two plans, I see a lot of benefit for the township in the mixed-use approach. One thing I like about it is it sort of addresses the entire township, as opposed to just something off to the side for only those handful of people who happen to move into that developed area. With the second plan, the development has something to offer for everyone in the township, and it's in a location that everyone in the township is really happy about right now as far as traffic. That means ShopRite is busy all the time, so there's lots and lots of people over there for them to potentially know that directly across the street is a trail they can walk, is a playground they can be in, that actually has the parking that's already there. It's also across the street from a developed area that has a trolley stop, so any transit-oriented features are kind of built into it. So overall, I like the fact that it's something for the township as opposed to just something for the developer and the handful of homeowners who might purchase there. And then the second thing I like is, again, from a township perspective, if we put in a mixed-use, we gain business privilege tax or mercantile tax from those properties, as well as property tax. We gain it from properties, the retail ones, that don't send children to school, that don't tend to use as many of the services that the homeowners then use. And so when we think about diversifying our tax base across the township, which is very important to our tax situation at the moment, the mixed-use development gives us that opportunity to diversify the, a tax flow into this building to help support the future, you know, future of, any costs that would come with that development. I can't speak for the school district, but building houses brings children, and to only have the houses without any retail or out and, without anything else to balance it, does not give us any opportunity to bring in extra money to address what additional residents bring to a township. Additional residents coming to this township is a great idea, too. We have a lot to offer. We have things of our current housing stock in play, as Rita mentioned earlier, to try to work with our current housing stock. There will always be people who are looking for a new housing stock, and so to be a place that offers both things to people, I think, is something that as the township tries to grapple with the 21st century, this is something that can help us get, get a little further down that 21st century path. So that's it.
All right. Yeah, I think both the plans look pretty good, but I am also, you know, would love to see if the second plan could be available. Also, again, creating a precedent for the mixed-use would probably be great for the future of the township in general, fixing up the zoning or diversifying it. I did want to ask, sort of just in that secondary, you know, the first one's pretty self-explanatory, how many people, you know, you have the units counted out. These three-story townhomes, what's like the density comparison to the first unit, you think? Like, I think there's, I counted like 90, but you know?
Yeah, I think I have that. We have 69 conventional three-story townhomes, and then there's 42 stacked townhomes. By a stacked townhome, they're essentially like interlocking. We've built these in Phoenixville. Currently, we, we just finished a project in Ellis Preserve at Route 3 and 252, where it's, it's a unit with another unit above it, essentially. We would build them under the height restrictions that, that the township has, and then we were also planning for 40 apartments on top of the retail commercial area.
Forty apartments on top, wow. Okay, and then these stacked units, you know, there would be an opportunity for sort of like, you know, like is that a first-floor only? So like an accessibility unit for?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, okay, perfect. Love to hear that. And I see you have, across the plan, areas marked out for stormwater management. Again, this is maybe jumping way ahead, but is there any other sustainability, like things that you've built on these other places, like the one you just, the Ellis Preserve location, or?
The, you know, we could look at, from a stormwater management standpoint, rain gardens and that, that type of stuff. Because we have that riparian buffer along the side there, that's where we just wanted to have kind of the chip trail through there, meandering, rather than building anything necessarily in that area. But yeah, for sure, stormwater management will control both the quantity and quality of stormwater. So essentially, the water that hits these roofs will go back down into the ground to infiltrate. Essentially, it captures the water, rather than, right now, it's, it's an uncontrolled field, so the water just runs right into the creek there. So we're capturing it, holding it back, and then releasing it slowly into the creek, so that you would avoid future additional flooding down, downstream from this property. In terms of the water quality, because we're infiltrating it, it's seeping through the ground and naturally cleaning it in that sense.
Okay, perfect. I think my last sort of question is just, again, I know these are concepts, but it does seem like if there's a retail element and the 40 units of the, of the apartment, that the parking might be a little, maybe it's underrepresented, maybe, maybe not. I'm obviously not counting every spot, but I know there's the, the 110 goes through there. Is, is that the only public transportation currently, do we know?
There's the trolley across the street is the only other.
There's a trolley across, okay.
And Drexel Line.
Yeah, yeah, I would just, yeah, I'm assuming the ShopRite gets good mileage out of the bus stop, so this would just sort of be hopping on that, but I'm almost like, how do we add more if you, if you could end up building this, or, or like getting a bus stop to go right in front of the building or something, but, okay. I mean, yeah, I, again, if I, if I had to choose which one to build tomorrow, which I do not have that power, I would, I would, I would vote for the second one, but that is, that is all I have, all I have at the moment.
Thanks, Mike. Lee?
Hi, Mr. Lingo. Thank you for your interest in the township and the school district. I'm familiar with everything you've done with the school district, because I served on the school board, and also with your development down at Hillcrest area.
Oh, great.
When you, when you built that. I'm not like my, my colleagues on the board, is that I would actually just like to leave the property the way it is and leave it as open space, because I feel what Upper Darby does lack is open space. I would like to see you go and repurpose some of these abandoned buildings that we have within the township. I feel that either one of these plans, Plan A or Plan B, would just be very taxing on our public services, the police, the fire, the EMTs, the school district for sure, because I assume these aren't age-restricted, either one of these plans.
Correct.
Okay. You know, also, traffic already is, we're very congested in that area, and I can't imagine adding more people and more cars onto Route 1 and State Road. It, it's, I mean, I live right off. I live on Pilgrim Lane, so it's pretty much impossible to even get out of my, you know, get out of my street. And, you know, studies show that in communities, when you have accessibility to green space, you experience better health outcomes, stronger community ties, and higher property values. And to meet that, I feel in our current needs, we need to preserve what little open space that we still have. And I understand the township doesn't own it, and that, you know, maybe you're negotiating right now to buy the property, but I would like to see it stay as open space. We have a ton of wildlife back in there, and, you know, I just feel we have children that go to Collinbrook, even though that's not affected, but the children that come to Collinbrook, they've never seen anything like the woods and the deer, and it's only like 10 minutes from their house. Yeah, I mean, that's my feeling right now. I just really, you know, I just really feel that we already are densely populated enough, and, you know, I would just like to leave it just as open space.
Yeah, that's good feedback. The, in this case, the seller is a family trust that has owned the property for a long time. They recently sold the apartments across the street, the high-rise apartments, to a developer. So they hired a firm out of Baltimore to sell the property. There were, I believe, 15 offers to purchase it. We were one of them. And so we've put it under agreement. We have not settled on it yet necessarily, but it does seem like if, if I went home, somebody else is going to come in after that. So then I think what the township has now is an opportunity to kind of mold the best use possible, knowing that at some point, something's going to happen with the property, most likely. Part of our submission, we would do a fiscal and a traffic study, just to make sure that we weren't exacerbating any, any problems with regard to that. But they're, they're good, valid points, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, I do, I do want to bring in Joshua. Maybe you know better, but, you know, we had just tree sort of offsetting, you know, you cut down some trees to build, you had to plant them somewhere else, or, but, you know, like how would that, the scale of this seems phenomenal for someone like that, or prohibitive almost. Is there anything, or that would just have to be worked out at the zoning commission?
That's part of what we would need to figure out in the formal land development stage, which we have, we have not started yet.
Of course not.
Right? It would start with a study and marking of all the trees that are there, and then right from there, we would figure out, right, what's the diameter of those trees, what tree, you know, and then what the replacement trees would be, right? I know you're interested in building up that riparian buffer and that side area, so kind of taking that into account, and then offsetting it, and then anything else that can't be fit, right, possibly doing a fee in lieu of.
Yep. We're planning elsewhere in the township.
Yep, that, yeah, that's what the fee would be.
Yeah.
Perfect.
All right, thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
At this point, if there are members of the public who would like to make a comment about the preference of the two plans presented, you could just, you know, organize yourselves, come forward, state your name, and make your comment. So first person?
Thank you guys for having this meeting tonight. Thank you, sir, for coming out and proposing this plan. I'm a resident on 27 Pilgrim Lane, and I'm a neighbor of Lee Jordan, and I haven't, I don't have as many years in Upper Darby as Lee has, but we were in Springfield for 18 years of my life, and then moved to Upper Darby, never left, and I don't think I'm ever going to leave. But I have a lot invested in the community here. My name's Carl Hemphill, by the way. So my whole thing is, I applaud this guy for being a businessperson. I mean, he's very successful. I know a little bit his background, I don't know the guy personally, but I applaud people who go out and work, create jobs, and I know what he did on Fern Boulevard, it's beautiful. But this particular site, like I have a business on State Road, and there's a couple of reasons why I'm a little, little, little sketchy about what's being proposed here tonight. The main thing is, like, I agree with Lee as far as green space is important. In fact, my brother Ken helped save the woods behind O'Hare, and that was a big service. And I know that the Archdiocese took a big haircut. They had it under agreement for $45 million, and a developer, I forget the gentleman's name, but he was a big developer on, on the main line, he lost a $5 million non-refundable deposit to the Archdiocese, and I told my brother Ken, he's probably got a, the Mossad might put an X on his back, because that guy lost a lot of money. But Ken did a great job with his group, saved marble green space, because we grew up in those woods. We were playing in those pits. It was great for kids. It was like a big lung, and he saved, not just him, but a lot of that people, saved marble green space. They did a great job. But what he really did, he actually saved Darby Township from getting flooded out. You know, I have property in Darby. That town floods, like there's nobody's business, and just look at Hurricane Floyd in 1999, what it did to that down there. I'm not, I'm not saying Greg's, Mr. Lingo's property's going to do that. I have no idea. But I think green space is the best space to keep everything, to keep the water staying on the property and not going into the streams, to think downstream. I do like Lee's idea. There's tons of places in Upper Darby that need work. I wish Mr. Lingo would buy the Tower Theater and bring that back to life. I wish Mr. Lingo would buy the Tower Theater and bring that back to life. Can we do that? Get Live Nation, let's get that and have Greg build a hotel on 69th Street. Can we do that? And then we'll get more cops, and I really think drug trafficking should be a capital offense in America, because drugs is what's killing this place. More people have died on overdoses, you name it. People selling drugs and drug traffickers have paid zero price. If we solve that problem, America's coming back to life. Look no further than Singapore. They speak four languages in that country. Drug trafficking is 100% illegal, it's a capital offense. So as a result, they plowed all their money in education, their criminal justice budget's on the floor. They have like three cops. Upper Darby needs one cop down the road after we do this nationally, because drugs have ravaged this country, poisons the workforce, poisons the schools, it's toxic. Mr. Lingo could have this theater, he could have Live Nation, buy them out, let's get the hotel, let's straighten up this terminal, it's a mess, before we start going in the green space. And that's my thoughts. I'm just a simple guy, I own a recycling business and I invest in real estate, but I think Greg's idea for that neighborhood would really exacerbate the traffic problem, the wildlife, you name it. It's just not, it's not the right move right now, when we got all these other ills in Upper Darby. I mean, that's what I'd rather see. And I'm, I live right there, you know? I'd like to talk to Mr. Lingo about some other ideas I have as well, but for here and now, this, at the beginning of this, I would say I'm not for this, you know? Because I love that little spot that people can walk back in there and enjoy the green space, so to speak, and not exacerbate the creeks with extra floodwaters, rainwaters and whatnot. And my brother Ken did educate me about open space and how it should be preserved, you know? So we have the opposite viewpoints on a lot of things, but on that thing, I agree with him. Preserving green space is important. That's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve Lockard, 427 Spruce Avenue. Just a point of clarification, this piece of land, is this the piece of land that's the wedge of land between Township Line and State Road, where the Collinbrook Church is? Or is it across Township Line on the north side?
It's the wedge between, it's next to the church.
Okay. All right, thank you. I agree with much of what Mr. Hemphill said.
My name is Barbara Marinelli, I live on Pilgrim Lane in Drexel Hill. I am opposed to developing this site. Now, this site has been talked about by the Mazino family for a long, long time, and they've never developed it, and there's a reason why, and I don't know what the reason why is. I know that there is a lot of rocks in that area, I know the stormwater coming down from Collinbrook, the brook, it starts at the headwaters, start at Township Line, right near Drexel Avenue. I know Collinbrook Farm, owned by the township, has riparian buffer problems right now because of the amount of water that's coming down there. It's washing away the sides of the property at Collinbrook. It's also washing away about 11 homes in their backyards, which was emergency repair that's been going on now. So that's just the beginning, and that's all coming down towards this stream. There was also, the hurricanes that have come through that flooded the church and that area as well. So I would be cautious about putting that kind of density into that area for the same reason. Open space, we need it. We now feeling need it. Thank you.
My name's James Johnson, I live on Stanbridge Road, I've boarded this property. Like the previous speakers, I totally, I'm totally against any development of that property, all due respect to Mr. Lingo. The property sat vacant for 125 years. Why didn't the township aggressively go after it when it was for sale to preserve open space when every municipality in the tri-county area is trying to preserve open space, we're trying to develop the last pieces of ground we have in Upper Darby Township? I think there's some due diligence, I'm sure they're doing their due diligence, but my family's been here since, for 125 years. I gave 32 years of my life to this township. I've been a resident for 57 years. I've lived in every section of this township. I finally moved to an area where there's no light pollution, there's wildlife, there's deer in my backyard every night, there's owls, there's migratory birds come through that property, and now it's all going to be gone because we want to grab seven or 10 more houses or 50 more houses, and then the school district, it's a ripple effect of problems. The school district's busting at the seams. My kids went through all the schools, graduated from Upper Darby. There's no space left for any more kids, okay? And all due respect to Ms. Niffon, they have developed areas, I believe the gentleman said he developed behind the old Arjuda Cemetery, there's housing in that cul-de-sac off Marvine, they developed the Whalen property. We're running out of properties, and we're running out of open space. So I know a lot of my neighbors and friends that live in that area, we enjoy the quiet, you know, all due respect, there's other places that can be redeveloped here where money can be made. I know every section of this township like the back of my hand, I know where every dilapidated property is in this township. I just think there's other things we can do here than start to create a ripple effect of wildlife, you know, displacement, water management. State Road is a traffic jam now, so it's just disheartening to see that this is going to be developed. And again, all due respect to Mr. Lingo, I appreciate what he does for communities and redevelopment, I just think that this space should be preserved, and I would hope that the township would try and aggressively go after to preserve this space. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to make a comment?
Mike Hemphill, property owner in the neighborhood 5216 Belveste. Also, I want to applaud Mr. Lingo as well as being a good developer, does good work, did a nice job on Beverly Boulevard. But I think this is a really bad idea, because it's, if you look at it from the air, it's a convergence of Route 1, State Road, and it gets really congested, especially during holidays. During holidays, you can barely move over there. And I second what Lee Jordan's saying, it's a beautiful area, and I think if you try to cram in 100 homes with mixed use, I think it's a really, it's even worse idea, to be honest. Because it's just going to create so much congestion over there. I think the township, as Carl was pointing out, if a place like the Tower Theater were redeveloped, you know, if Upper Darby, you know, could take a really strong course against the drug problem, and also, in my opinion, the litter problem. I just drove down 69th Street the other day from the Yaden area, and I couldn't believe it. I mean, it looked like I was in North Philadelphia, and there was trash everywhere, and it was like going in the sewers and down the sewer. So I think we got really big problems on this side of the township that we got to work out first before we ruin, like, what's left of the other side of the township. I think the township should come up with a game plan to try to figure out how to buy this ground and preserve it for good, because it's a precious piece of ground. And like, when you're coming northbound on Route 1 out of Springfield, and you go into Upper Darby, it's one of the nicest things to see when you're driving down, I call it down Route 1, but it's really, you're actually heading north, and to see that gigantic stand of old trees is such a beautiful thing. And there's animals in there, and there's walking trails, and it's, and I think once you cut all the trees down and ruin that place, it'll be, the result of it will actually be worse than what was intended. It's going to, it'll be the last straw, is what I'm, like, it's like in that book, The Lorax, when the one slayer cut down the last tree, he ruined the place, you know what I mean? So, and not that I'm saying Mr. Lingo is, I know he's got a good, you know, he's a smart man, he does great in a lot of communities he serves, but I think this one particular plan is not a good idea for a township. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Gene Marinelli. I live on Pilgrim Lane, and I've been a resident of Upper Darby for 67 and a half years. And my only point is, of course, I disagree with the development of this open space. It makes absolutely no sense in this day and age where all the other communities, townships are buying up open space, and Upper Darby's doing the opposite. It makes absolutely no sense. It will basically destroy that corner. And in addition, as a point of reference, Drexel Line Shopping Center is beautiful, but there's not enough parking already. So it's already chaotic down there. So I completely disagree, and I respect any businessman that wants to try developing, but we're going to fight it. So I encourage Upper Darby Township to try to purchase the property, like other townships do, and keep it as an open park. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that it's safe to say that what we've heard back now, just if I can summarize it a bit, is less to do with the options that Mr. Lingo presented, with the property currently being zoned as residential. Mr. Lingo brought forward two residential plans, but what we're hearing from the assembled residents is more about the use of the property overall, as opposed to one plan versus another. So I think we've all heard. Greg, I'd offer you the opportunity, if you had anything else you wanted to say at this point, and then Josh, I think we're good.
Yeah, I respect everybody's opinion, and I really appreciate the forum, just to have this dialogue. As I mentioned, we were looking for feedback with regard to which way should we go with a plan. We feel like one plan preserves more open space. Upper Darby Township, even parts of Drexel Hill are already mixed use, they don't have a mixed use zoning. So I think it's, I think it's a good idea for the township to create a mixed use zoning, whether it's here or not here. If these were just single homes, that's what, they're just going to be single homes, but from a mixed use standpoint, I think it would be more reflective of what some other municipalities are doing. The commercial retail would absolutely have to have adequate parking for it to be viable. So we're totally on board with that. We're not looking to exacerbate that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. So given that tonight's event was really just a presentation and an opportunity for feedback, there was really no action being requested of the commission this evening, there is no plan actually developed at this point. So I think, given that everybody's had an opportunity to make a comment and respond, Josh, anything further you would like to add at this point?
No, not at this time.
Okay. So next on our agenda is simply to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
So I have one question. So now what? So we heard the options, so, and the conversation existed, so it's up to Mr. Lingo to proceed? Because you have to go to the zoning board anyway, right? Because depending on if you go with Plan B, I guess, because that would need.
So there's a couple things. So, right, we have to remember that this is private property, right, and it is zoned R-2. So Mr. Lingo has roughly two options, right? That is to proceed with a byright plan, which would be option A, or to try and go with option B, or some version of option B that can be crafted, right, through a new mixed use zoning designation. And that will actually come back to the planning commission as, right, a zoning amendment, and then the plan, versus going to the zoning hearing board. And that ultimately has to get approved by council, both as a zoning text amendment, map amendment, and then finally, like any other land development plan. Option A might have to go through zoning, but not for anything dramatic, not for the use or anything like that.
Motion to adjourn? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your comments.